Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, we praise you for this day and we praise you for your son. We praise you that we get to meet as a council. Praise you for the citizens that are here tonight. We praise you for the... All the council members. We ask that you be with all our families. We ask you be with the citizens' families. We ask you please be with the staff of our Greenville County. And we just ask you, God, in all that we do, let us make decisions that glorify you in all that we do, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda are approval of minutes from the May 21st meeting.
Move to approve.
All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda are proclamations and special recognition. I'd like to call on Chairman Harrison recognizing the Greenville Center for Creative Arts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the privilege this evening to recognize the Greenville Center for Creative Arts. Just to give you all a little background on this group, GCCA is a nonprofit organization founded in 2015 by a dedicated group of artists, art advocates, and community leaders. They're located in the historic Brandon Mill in Greenville. GCCA is the only art center of its kind in the Greenville area. They specialize in hands-on visual arts instruction for all ages and skill levels, as well as providing resources, professional development, and exhibition opportunities for both emerging and established artists. GCCA also has had a big impact in our community. They attract over 30,000 visits each year. It generates an estimated $300,000 annually in additional audience spending on dining, parking, lodging, et cetera, as well as over $50,000 in local government revenue. They support local artists through exhibition opportunities, sales, and promotion through the shop at GCCA, affordable studio space, and professional development. They also promote Greenville as a cultural destination through the marketing of high-level contemporary exhibitions by local, regional, as well as nationally-known artists. Lastly, they expand art education and engagement through free programming with Free Town and Sterling Community Centers and a partnership with Greenville County Schools. So I'd just like to take a little bit of time, and Jess Abbott and her team are here this evening, so I just wanted to recognize them. And if you all would stand and be recognized so we can thank you for all your hard work. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do for Greenville County. The next person I'd like to call on is Dr. Fant with a proclamation celebrating fatherhood in the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families. Dr. Fant, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the joy... June is the joy of Fatherhood Month, so I'd like to ask the representatives for the Center for Fathers and Families to meet me at the podium. Fatherhood in the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families, whereas the fathers are the cornerstone of strong families providing love, guidance, and support to their children. And whereas the positive impact of fathers on their children's development cannot be overstated, as they instill values, encourage growth, and foster resilience. And whereas the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families, established in 2002, has been a beacon of support, equipping tens of thousands of fathers across the state with the resources and knowledge needed to embrace responsible fatherhood. And whereas the long public-private partnership between the center and state, local and private agencies, has led to the center's expansion and innovation of programs to serve more dads better. And whereas the center has developed and expanded the reach of its network of five regional fatherhood organizations, including A Father's Place, Man-to-Man, Midland's Fatherhood Coalition, A Father's Way, and Upstate Fatherhood Coalition. And whereas when fathers actively lead and engage with their children, these young lives flourish socially, emotionally, and academically. Whereas the center continues to serve as a model for fatherhood initiatives nationwide. And whereas the month of June provides an opportunity for all citizens of South Carolina to celebrate and honor the joys of fatherhood, recognizing the tireless efforts of fathers in shaping the future of our communities. Now therefore, Greenville County Council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as the Joy of Fatherhood Month throughout the county and encourage all of our residents to express gratitude for fathers in their lives, celebrate the contributions, and to promote the active involvement of fathers in their children's lives, to embrace these young people, help make them better citizens, and strengthen South Carolina families and communities. Sign this fourth day, Dan Tripp, Chairman. Congratulations.
Father's Day is right around the corner, so this is a great time to stop and think about that. Thank you for coming tonight and being recognized. And thank you, Dr. Fant, for the proclamation celebrating fathers. Next item on the agenda are appearances on current agenda items. And I think we've got one speaker tonight, Diane Vreeland. You'll give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Diane Vreeland, 413 Heather Falls Lane in Simpsonville. I would like to once again address the council on the matter of filos. I see that in Agenda Item 11A, we have an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between a company known to the county at this time as Project Anchorage. I have some questions. Do council members know the actual name of the company? Can I assume that the GADC knows who they are? Why doesn't the public have the right to know which companies you are courting? What type of business is this, i.e. manufacturing, warehouse? Is their headquarters here in Greenville, or are they located out of state? Since we all know what "assume" really means, can I assume that these questions will not be answers as all my previous questions have not been answered to date since the beginning of February? I digress. I do think filos can serve a positive impact, as one did when we brought BMW into our area, which served us well. This does not appear to be the case regarding Project Anchorage. There will be an investment of approximately $11,150,000 with 35 projected jobs. The required investment of $10,035,000 for an investment period of five years and an assessment ratio of 6% for a period of 30 years and a fixed millage of 332.2. Well, here we go again. We are cutting deals with new companies at reduced rates while our infrastructure is questionable at best and our roadways are in total disrepair. One might ask if by continually providing filos, if this practice is unsustainable and ultimately self-defeating. To add insult to injury, we are going to ask the public to pony up more of their hard-earned tax dollars to fix all the above through an eight-year referendum, which will be on the ballot in November. And at the same time, council members are cutting tax deals with corporations, having them pay less money over an extended period of time. Respectfully, the optics are really, really bad. Greenville was just named, as U.S. News and World reported, as the fourth-best place to live in the United States. Normally, this would be great news, but unfortunately, we cannot manage our booming population and all that evolves from that. What I know is that people really want to come here, and they will come here, to live and work whether or not we cut a deal. In conclusion, I am once again asking and urging that council place a moratorium on filos until we get our own house in order. I'd like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk so it's part of the public record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Diane. The next item on the agenda are public hearings. And the first one is Item 7A, Greater Greenville Sanitation District Annexation. I'll call on Chair Liz Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a resolution to enlarge the boundaries of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District to include 618 South Parker Road. Has anybody signed up to speak in favor or in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Seaman, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, having no speakers, I'll declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Next item is 7B, the Greenville County Library System FY 2025 Budget. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint... Excuse me. I believe I'm on the wrong one. Let me back up to Item 7B, Greenville County Library System FY 2025 Budget. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds for the Greenville County Library System for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, and to authorize the annual ad valorem property tax millage levy for library purposes. Ms. McCaskill, has anybody signed up to speak either in favor or in opposed?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirven, we have one speaker in opposition. That would be Sheila Kine.
Okay, please come forward and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Sheila Keeney. I'm at 106 Odell Street, Greenville. I'm here to speak at this public hearing for the library budget. I know some of you are tired of the controversy, likely want it all to go away so you can get on to more important things, but there is nothing more important than our children. There's nothing more evil than the full-fledged attack on innocents by those who want to sow confusion in the minds of our little ones. Over the last nine months, a group of concerned women in the community have been submitting book review requests, which is a process that the library already had in place. We've asked the librarians to simply follow their own policies when categorizing books. Librarians have agreed that their own policies against sexually explicit materials were broken and have moved 39 titles to the adult section. However, another 10 titles have required an appeal and a vote of the Board of Trustees. One book that I personally appealed, We Are the Aons by Sean David Hutchinson, is filled with highly disturbing content culminating in a scene where one boy is violently raped by another boy after smashing his head into the ground. Librarians thought that this was appropriate material for kids and refused to move it to the adult section. Thankfully, the appointed board disagreed. One thing I'll note, it's good news, in most cases, these file books aren't even being checked out. I look at the website often, thank God, so why are we wasting the money? Until the library wants to proactively take responsibility for ensuring their own policies are followed rather than putting the onus on the public, I'm asking that this board freezes the budget of the library to last year's funding level rather than giving them a over-6% increase. An over-25-million-dollar budget with $3.5 million for new materials for one year is a staggering amount of money to award this library system, taxing and spending to propagandize our children. A frozen budget, I believe, will make librarians think twice about ordering books that do not fit our community's standards and that, in many cases, kids, thank God, don't even want to read. I'll let you know quickly. I moved here from Minneapolis three years ago. I am here because of what you guys do. In God we trust. You pray before meetings. This is the Bible Belt. That's why I moved here. And it is the backbone to this community. And I just hope you will continue to keep God in mind. Keep God in mind and what He would want on the books of our library shelves with our tax money. This board has the power of the purse, and I'd like to ask you to exercise that tonight and freeze their budget. Thank you.
Ms. McCaskill, has any other speaker signed up either in favor or opposed? I'd like to close this public hearing. Close, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Next item, 7C, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, the 2010 Park of Anderson and Greenville County, so as to enlarge the park related to Swampy Town LSC, formerly Project Catapult. Has anybody signed up to speak in favor or opposed?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirven, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. McCaskill. Mr. Chairman, I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Thank you. Take the next one, 2008 Perimeter Road Partners LLC.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County and South Carolina and 2008 Perimeter Road Partners LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, has anyone signed up to speak in favor or opposed?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirven, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
I declare this public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman. I just did perimeter road. Yep. I put 7D now.
Okay, so 7E is the last one, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County.
I believe I gotta do 7D.
Okay, 7D then. 2008 Perimeter Road Partners. Right, you did D.
I did that one, so where do E? I'm sorry.
Okay. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment.
Yeah, 7E. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park. This is 2008 Perimeter Road Partners LLC, formerly Project Pegasus. It was two different items on this, so it was two public hearings related to the same property. Anybody signed up to speak in favor or opposed?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirven, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
I declare this public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda are resolutions. And I'll call on Chair Seaman for the Greater Greenville Sanitation District Annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption a resolution to enlarge the boundaries of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District to include 618 South Parker Road.
All right. You've heard the motion. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. Next item are ordinances at third reading. I'll call on Dr. Fant for a couple zoning ordinances at third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2024-022. Property located at 107 Page Drive in Whitehorse Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from S1 to FRD with a condition. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose a resolution to delay this for one meeting.
So hold it until the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of holding this till the next meeting on the 18th, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the eyes have it. Next item, 23.
24-023. Property located at 1203, 1207, and 1209 Grove Road, Greenville. Requesting rezoning from OD to C2. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of CZ 2024-023 at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. On item 24.
Property located at 1420 Hampton Avenue Extension, Greenville. Requesting rezoning from RM 20 to S1. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. On next one, 27.
Property located on O. Easley Highway, Gassiminy Drive, and O. Bramlett Road, Greenville. Requesting rezoning from R15 to C3. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. The next item is 9B. Chairman Kirven, the Greenville County Library System FY 2025 Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds for the Greenville County Library System for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, and authorize the annual ad valorem property tax millage levy for library purposes. And the library requested no increase in tax millage.
All right. Any questions? All those in...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Juvalakis.
So I thought you just said they didn't add for... They didn't ask. We're on 9B, right? Correct. They didn't ask for any increase. But that's not what the ordinance is saying, is it?
Millage increase.
The millage increase.
The budget can go up without millage increase.
Yes. So we're voting for the budget? Or are we voting for the increase right now?
There is no millage increase.
The millage increase.
It's the same millage they had last time.
Is that because of additional tax revenue? Mr. Chairman, this is Counselor Shaw.
This is Shaw.
Is that because there is additional tax revenue that the budget has the expanded capacity to take an increase without increasing the millage?
The library system came in to Finance Committee and said they want no millage increase. And that's what the Finance Committee voted to approve, and that's what we have here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. But how were they able to have a 6% increase in budget without a millage increase?
I don't... I'm not in control of their budget, but we didn't approve a millage increase.
Dr. Shaw, you know as well as I do, they are an independent body. They set their own budget. We do not set their budget, so...
They might have had a reduction in operating cost. I don't know.
Okay. I would make an amendment or a motion to hold this to gather more information as to why they needed a 6% increase.
Okay. The motion is made to hold this.
Mr. Chairman, if we held it, this is the third reading. Okay, I was looking at the timing to get it done before the fiscal year ends.
Okay.
I ask for a roll call, please, Mr. Chairman.
Could... May I add? Mr. Shaw, would you be open to a friendly amendment?
I'll hear it. Yes, please.
Well, so I mean, I think often when we say motion to hold for more information, then we don't get more information. I'm wondering if there is a formal way. Either we ask the library to come to Cal or maybe to add it to the next finance agenda. I just feel like sometimes we don't really ever get the additional information in the way that all council members can hear it.
Sure. I mean, if you want to... You're saying make it a more definite...
Just better to find how we're going to get the information, I guess.
Okay. I would just ask that the director come and explain, you know, succinctly why 6% increase is needed.
And come to our next Cal meeting.
All right. The motion's been made. What...
I think motion to hold and ask the library to make another presentation to committee of the whole to better explain the budget.
All right. All those in favor...
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'll just put on the roll that I'm in favor of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, you have 12 in favor. No one opposed.
All right. This will be held until we get more information from the director. Next item on the agenda is the Clear Spring Fire and Rescue District General Obligation Bond. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $2.3 million Greenville County, South Carolina, general obligation bond, Clear Spring Fire and Rescue District Project Series 2024B, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. Next item is the Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park for Swampy Town LLC, formerly Project Catapult.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments I'd like to make regarding this.
You recognize?
We've had a lot of discussions in committee and elsewhere in this meeting about economic development incentives, filos, things like that. And we've all been thinking about that a good bit. And I've been doing a little research, and I found out that South Carolina has one of the highest corporate tax rates of any state around. Recognizing that factor, it used to be 10.5% assessment. About three years ago, the General Assembly reduced that to 6% on manufacturing properties. Your homeowners, if you occupy your home, you're at 4%. So very few industries would come to South Carolina and pay in a high exorbitant tax rate. Now, the General Assembly reduced it to 6%, which is the same rate that commercial properties and non-owner occupied properties pay. So the expert told me that we don't lose a dime on the fee end of it. Now, it does come with a lock-in millage for a certain period of years. But the millage rate changes very little. They only save money in case the millage goes up, which it only has one time in 30 years. So there's not a large savings there. But the way the legislation is set up with multi-county parks and filos and 6% assessment fixed and locked-in millage and SSRCs is the formula that we've been given at the local government level by the state to make South Carolina's industries competitive. We really don't lose any money at the county level. For example, the one we're about to consider by council, this Swampy Town. They're going into a multi-county park, but they're not getting any filo at all. The only reason they're doing that is so that they can qualify for state job tax credits that are authorized under state law and will help them establish a new business that'll provide revenue back into the county. On the other side of the equation for larger industries, I think we lose sight of the fact that they do contribute enormous amounts of money into the local economy in the form of payroll, purchases they make from local small businesses, goods and services, and it ripples throughout the economy. And if it wasn't for this equalization and competitiveness for South Carolina, we would have a lot fewer jobs and investment in Greenville County. Also, if you look at the statistics, Greenville County labor participation rate is lower than a lot of other counties. Why that is, I don't know. So there's some elasticity there in the number of local employees that are eligible to take jobs. We question these companies very closely in Finance Committee and emphasize that we prefer them to hire locally. And if they need training for employees to get a better job, then they work with Greenville Tech and the vocational schools. Some of them need engineers, and they locate here because of proximity to Clemson University. But our priority is local jobs for local folks. We do not encourage attracting a lot of people moving in from out of state because, quite frankly, people make a good point. We do have a robust population, and we are saturated. It wears out roads and requires new schools and those kind of things. But it's a mistake to believe that growth pays for the improvements to those things. Over time, it's a slow process. So all we're doing here at the county level is utilizing the tools that are prescribed by state law, approved by the General Assembly, to equalize the competitiveness of Greenville County and our state in general for economic development. Now, the motion that we're about to present here is a 9D, I believe. I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial business park, 2010 Park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, to enlarge the park for Swampy Town LLC, formerly Project Catapult, and that's on the floor.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. Next item is 2008 Perimeter Road Partners LLC. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and 2008 Perimeter Road Partner LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source... of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Juvolakis.
I got a couple of comments. One, the multi-county that we just went over, I get that, Mr. Curran, I appreciate you sharing that, but the fee in lieu of tax, when we set it up for thirty years, the property values increased, but the fee stays the same. So that's where we, as a county, it hurts us as far as our income.
It doesn't lock the value, it locks the millage.
Right, but the state now puts it at six percent. Correct. So why do we got to lock it in now as a county? I mean, and I understand, and also, we know from what Dr. Royster told us when he met with us, that it hurts the children in the school, these filos, because of the taxes. He said that, Dr. Royster said that to us. And also, why do we want to continue to give them tax breaks? I get it, people will come, and we got a great place, or our unemployment rate is at three and a half percent, you know, with a six percent from the state, that should be plenty. You know, that's the way I look at it, and, you know, we've got, and we keep wanting to tax people more, we want to give tax breaks, but then we want to tax the citizens. So, I mean, it's just, it's just to me, a problem, that's all, Mr. Curran, is all I'm saying to you. I don't know how we'd get there with these filos, I do believe, and this particular one, let's just talk about this Project Pegasus. What's the, is it not even a, do we have a business that's going in there right now?
Project Pegasus?
Yes.
I'm not at liberty to disclose a lot, but that's a speculative building.
Right.
It's built on the property of SC Tech. There's an arrangement that is being considered with one of our major employers and major industries to use that building for security purposes, to move them off-site, off-site, onto-site, and so I think that this is a facilitation of a major employer that contributes an enormous amount to our local economy.
Mr. Harrison. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everyone that a lot of this is discussed in Finance Committee and additionally to our fellow colleagues, that, you know, everybody's welcome to sit in these executive sessions, because this exact topic, it's a good question, Mr. Juvolakis, but this exact topic, we were at liberty to discuss in executive session, which I'm just encouraging everybody to come, because it's very informational with these types of projects.
And I agree with that, but the other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Harrison, is the people out here don't get to come to the Cal meetings, they don't get to come to the finance meetings, and this is a good place for the citizens to hear our discussions.
Let me add one more thing to the transparency question. Under state law, companies that are negotiating with the county are entitled to privacy up until the public hearing at third reading. At third reading, full names are disclosed, public hearing, the full names of the companies and entities are disclosed, but these are competitive situations. They're also comparing Greenville County with other locations, and negotiations are underway, and it would be disadvantageous to businesses to have public knowledge of what companies are looking at going where unless they choose to divulge it. Here again, that's authorized under state law, we're simply following the procedures that have been given to us by the General Assembly.
All right, thank you. Question is adoption of the ordinance at third reading. All those in favor, say aye. I've already called for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
May I ask for a roll call, Mr. Chairman?
I call for the vote before you ask for a roll call.
That's not.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Opposed.
The ayes have it. All right, next item is nine F. Chairman Curran.
I move for adoption at third reading and to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, twenty-ten park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park for two oh oh eight Perimeter Road Partners LLC, Project Pegasus, and this is a companion to the previous ordinance that puts this property into a multi-county park, which opens a way for other state opportunities such as job tax credits, if that's part of the plan here, Greenville County's not a party to that, but it's a companion to the previous motion that we made.
All right, all those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, we're on ordinances at second reading, and I'll call.
Mr. Chairman, we do get the vote when you ask for the vote. We do get, when you ask for opposed.
Yes.
And it passed. No, I mean, but let us vote out loud.
Thank you.
We heard you.
We heard you.
Okay.
All right, ordinance is at second reading. CZ twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-one, Chairman Fant.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Property located at twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four East Lee Road, Taylor's, requesting rezoning from R twenty to R ten. The Planning Commission recommended approval and the committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move. It says approval of the ordinance at second reading, which it should be, it should be denied. Yeah, the committee's recommendation was denied, and I know it say approval, but it should say denial.
Yeah, I was just, I'm pulling up the documentation and noticed that there are almost sixty signatures against, just curious of the committee's conversation since it came with staff and planning commission approval.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Shaw on this, we've had some conversations, so, Mr. Shaw, this is, I don't know if you've heard any updates on this property?
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. If we can hold it, I would do that. If it's just dragging on too long for holding, then I would recommend denial at this time, or I would, I'll vote for denial, but if it can be held, I would ask that it be, we vote for holding it.
So where are we at? Is that a motion holding?
This is the one with the.
We held it several times.
We held it several times.
Just once, I'm okay with the hold, but that's just me, I mean, I would.
Is this the one that was on East Lee Road where all the people were against it because of the congestion and the traffic?
Let me give a little more clarity, I'll follow Mr. Shaw's in conversation. So, yes, there were several against it since that time, from what we were told, several of the community leaders had indicated they were in favor of it, but I don't know, again, that's why I was asking Mr. Shaw if he'd heard any follow-up from those discussions, so I have none.
So this is the one we held last time, that you asked me about?
At P and D, P and D, we held it, yeah.
All right, what's the will of the body?
Is there a motion on the floor or no?
The motion was to deny it.
Okay.
Well, I would be open to holding it, I would just hate to see something denied if there's an opportunity for some continued discussion, I think it would be worth holding it, there's no time, I mean, I don't think there's under any time constraint, so happy to make a motion to hold.
All right, and I think I heard Dr. Shaw say that too, so all those in favor of holding CZ twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is Malden Fire District Millage. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption at second reading and ordinance to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Malden Fire Service Area consistent with state law limits for the operation and maintenance as well as for the maintenance of a capital improvement plan.
All right, all those, any questions on the ordinance at second reading? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is the Tigerville Fire Service Area Millage. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption, excuse me, I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to provide for the millage rate to be levied by the Tigerville Fire District.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Final item in this section is Greenville-Pickens Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to develop a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Pickens County pursuant to South Carolina law nineteen seventy-six, section four dash one dash one seventy, as amended, such industrial business park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Pickens County and to include certain property comprising the Pickens County Commerce Park and additional property with Pickens County located on Cartee Road, to provide for the written agreement with Greenville County, providing for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application, and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem tax and matters related thereto.
All right. Any questions on this ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and we're now at ordinances first reading, and I'll call on Chairman Curran for Project Anchorage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I propose, excuse me, I present for first reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Anchorage with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right, that'll stay on the council floor. We don't have any committee reports, administrators report? All right, and no requests and motions by county council members. One final motion.
Are we adjourned?
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we are adjourned.